All right, I will call this, I will now call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will now identify closed session topics of discussion. 2.1 Recommended Expulsions, 2.2 Recommended Suspended Expulsions, 2.3 Public Employee Assignment Reassignment Appointment, 2.4 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Complaints, 2.5 Conference with Labor Negotiator, 2.6 Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, and 2.7 Anticipated Litigation. General public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Seeing no public comment, I will now adjourn to closed session. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of this meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran será la interpreta el español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. El ir por audífonos al ame es ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public who would like to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table at the northeast entrance of this meeting room. Please hand the completed form to Board Manager Monica Andrew before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd be like to comment on. Ms. Andrew is sitting at the table in the back of this meeting room. There she is raising her hand. And members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in front of the room. The pledge of allegiance will now be led by Board Member Odo. Please stand.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very honor of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board took the following action in closed session on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Case Beer Soleno. The board voted 7-0 to approve the settlement agreement between the district and the parties represented by OAH case number. There is no case number, that's why I don't have one. All right, and between the district and parties representing this case. Revisions to the enclosure items and adoption of the board meeting agenda. There are revised item enclosures, numbers 4.1, 4.2, 6.11, and 11.1. May I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
No, second.
On a motion by Board Member Case Beer Soleno and a second by Board Member Belt. All those in favor?
Student board votes yes. Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
All right. One of the highlights of our evening, the student performance, I'd like to bring up Administrator of Teaching and Learning, Briann Phillips.
Good evening. Again, one of our highlights of our board meetings. Tonight we have Divisadero Middle School Jazz Band joining us. Their program director is Regina Abbott. Tonight they'll be performing 25 or 6 to 4. We have two soloists, Abraham Swatsky on the trombone and Isaiah Adams on the trumpet. Please join me in welcoming our Divisadero Middle School Jazz Band. Let's give our students another round of applause. At this time, as our students are filtering out, we invite our principals and directors who are favorite room for our parents to come on over into the board meeting and fill in. We have some seats saved for you in the front row.
I heard their excitement all the way from there.
All right, four-point spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Kirksham.
I thank you, Board President Gaby, board members and guests here tonight. Again, want to just say what a great job of Divisadero. What a great way to start our evening. And what a joy it must be to teach seventh and eighth graders music, right? Look how wonderful that was and just, you know, the passion of our teachers and our students to build that capacity in the kids and then to see them perform. That was just, I actually walked in on them a couple of weeks ago when I was visiting Divisadero. So it was great to now see some of the finished products. So really proud of them and wrote a great way to start our spotlight. So last month we talked about the band showcase, but we didn't have the images, so we wanted to bring that back. Again, this is an event put on each year by our Visalia Education Foundation to highlight our bands and so, as well as our dance, cheer, and other groups at our schools. This year, the event raised over $5,000 and that goes right back into scholarships and other things to support these programs at our sites. Thank you to our education foundation. Red Ribbon Week also has occurred in many of our schools to highlight the importance of being drug-free. Schools held dress-up days, activities, partners in the community to provide additional information, and we know how important it is to have a visible stand against drugs. Thank you for our school teams for making this possible. Also, of course, since we've been here, we've had every elementary teacher's favorite holiday, which is Halloween. And so many of our school events, probably should add middle school and high school too, truck-or-treat events that were held across our campuses. Many thanks to our PTAs and others for creating these great neighborhood events. We have some photos here from Riverway, GLC, Annie R. Mitchell, and others whose PTAs were all involved in these great events. So thank you for that. Also occurring in our schools, Safe Schools Week on National Save Day, which was October 23rd. It's recognized by thousands of schools across the country for the importance of creating safe learning environments for everyone. We have some images here of Gosham students who signed a pledge to keep campuses safe. Ivanhoe students completed an anti-bully imposter contest. Staff and students wore orange to honor Alex Orange who stood against violence. And we want to thank our schools for highlighting this important theme, also part of our Spread Kindness event. Another holiday celebrated not only in our nation but here in Visalia is Veterans Day. And many of our schools held special events either the Friday before the holiday or after to recognize our veterans. And so a few here, we see a yearly event really that's become a Veterans Day celebration at Mountain View Elementary. We have the Mount Whitney High School Jazz Band at the Tulare County Museum's annual Veterans Day event. And we see Riverway honoring veterans on Veterans Day with an art project. So thank you to those individuals and staff that helped put these events together. Beautiful image of the flag there. Also Native American Heritage Month, and for the third time, Sequoia High School hosted the third annual American Indian Resource Event at their site. It was created in an effort to amplify indigenous voices by highlighting various local tribes through dance, song, and cultural presentations. Students had the opportunity to learn about colleges and careers, and there were multiple organizations present. And we want to thank all of our volunteers and community partners for this event. Our students continue to shine. Another event that's put on through Tulare County is the Character Counts recognition. We're so excited. We had 565 students recognized during Character Count. So thank you to our staff, teachers, and others who recognized those students who demonstrated good D's and exemplified the six pillars of character, which are caring, citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness. So out of the 565, 33 were chosen to represent our schools in Visalia at the Visalia Times Delta on their weekend newspaper. They were also recognized at an event held at the county office. And so congratulations to all of those students. Continuing our recognition with student success, want to congratulate a group, and I believe they're here tonight, from Golden West. Their welding team recently placing at College of Sequoia's welding contest. And so here tonight, I think we have Trace Breckenridge and Ethan Butts, if you want to stand. Trace won second place and Ethan third. And through this content, both students earned welding certificates. They're available for hire. I'm sorry, that part wasn't. They'll be available, I'm sure. But also want, you know, just as we saw with Jazz Band and our students, it takes amazing teachers and support staff to make these events happen. And so also want to congratulate Matt McGill, I think also here tonight, our welding instructor. I know he has a heart and passion for this group. And he also, by the way, placed first in the instructors contest. So congratulations to him. And just to end again, if there's anybody else on this from the welding team or support, feel free to stand. Let's give you another round of applause. Thank you for. Thank you all for being here tonight. And then again, continuing, usually we don't necessarily highlight once students have graduated. We're really proud of them, of course, and wishing them future success. But there's one that's very noteworthy. Many of you are aware of our Civic Seal of Engagement that many of our students participate in. And so want to show this, this is Brooklyn from Mount Whitney. She recently graduated. She completed her state seal for civic engagement last year as a senior. And recently we learned that her project, which was on mandated active shooter training, earned national recognition, taking first place nationally. In her presentation, she shared data of interviews with the USD students, safety team, and others to talk about how we can improve our practices. So congratulations to her on this achievement, and she does attend College of Sequoia. So very proud of her. And again, just a testament to the work of the Civic Seal, very important and love to see more and more of our students engaging in that recognition. Spotlight on our visual and performing arts. A few weeks ago, both Redwood and Mount Whitney competed in the SoFi Stadium in Los Angeles. Redwood's marching band and Color Guard took first place in Quadruple A competition and earned caption awards for general effect music, visual, and high percussion. It's a great opportunity for our high schools. Congratulations to Redwood and Mount Whitney for participating. Redwood for their performance. And continuing with our high schools, of course, recently held our rivalry week, a very exciting time. I know many of you probably attended one of these games. Many of us on staff made it to both. This was the 69th Annual Cowhide and the 20th Battle for the Saddle. So very much a tradition that is alive and well and continuing in Visalia. And you see some of the images here. So obviously, at the end of the week, there's a football game. But it's much more than that. It's the events that lead up to that. It's the camaraderie at the school sites. All four of these schools get together and have different contests out in the community. New ones emerge every year, and I think you can kind of see in the top right, I think there was a new one that emerged this year between El Diamante and Golden West, and you see Principal Lambert with a pie in his hand and Principal Nelson facing that. I'll not go into further detail because, you know, there'll be next year's a competition. But just want to shout out all of our ASBs, all of our student leaders, all of our administrators, our staff that not only show up at the game, the band, the cheer, the dance, all of those, but also all the other things that go into what makes this week so special, all the events connected to the game. So congratulations to all of our high schools for great effort and fun in Rivalry Week. Continuing our focus on our students and sports, we had our elementary soccer tournament shifting. We had incredibly lucky to have these competitive opportunities for our elementary school. In its second year now, all 27 elementary schools participated in a day of soccer that ultimately culminated with Hurley Elementary winning the championship. So congratulations to Hurley and thank you to all the staff again. Another example of an event that takes a lot of hands to put together, but turns out amazing for our community. We had a football ELOP contest just a few months ago, and to be at that field, you see all the families, all the parents setting up and getting to watch their kids. So a great opportunity. One of my favorite each, every month or so is my student advisories that come together. We recently had our in-person session. We had over 54 elementary students, 22 middle, and 50 high school students all here at our district office. The elementary students focused on topics such as culture, student engagement, and safety, while our middle and high schools examined our VUSD cellphone policy, California laws on cellphone use, and policies from nearby districts, so that they're working to make ultimately a recommendation on what our policy should look like or our advancement of that. So thank you to all of those students. And again, always enjoy that opportunity because if you want to know how something's going, they will tell you. Moving to National School Lunch Week, again, you know, one of the great things in California, we have our no-cost breakfast and lunch. We know how important it is for our students to have healthy meals. And so recently, you see a few of us there. Regina, Eric, Kara, myself had lunch with some of our students to recognize our staff during this week. Great conversations, learned a little bit about their favorite items on the menu. And just as an information item, our nutrition team serve over 25,000 meals daily to our students. So really a shout out to our nutrition team and all the people that work to make sure that gets delivered to the right place. We want them to know how much their work is appreciated. And then also, as we talk about advancing academics, District News were thrilled to announce over 161 the USD seniors have been accepted to the UC Merced Fall 2025 through the Merced Automatic Admissions Program. Now, this along with our Fresno State Bulldog Bound Program was initiated a couple of years ago. And just in a, we've seen these numbers almost double in a year. This is, well, more than that, let me get my math here. This is 161% increase from the 62 students who earned acceptance into the program from last year, which was the inception year. What's even more incredible is that each student is also eligible to receive a $2,000 scholarship on top of other financial aid opportunities provided by the UC system. While students have achieved their preliminary acceptance, they'll still need to complete and submit. We like to push this information out multiple times. You may be automatically admitted, but you still have to submit your application by December 2nd to secure your spot. So we know we're working to make sure those 161 students know you got to send stuff in to get your spot, right? But I'm just extremely proud because this continues our board's commitment to making sure our students have access to post-secondary options beyond just maybe what's local, right? Automatic admission into a Cal State or University of California system is not easy to come by, and we have a path for so many of our students. And so love to see this continue to grow every year. Some of our observances during this month, we had, as we mentioned, National School Lunch Week, Bus Safety Week, Safe Schools Week, Red Ribbon Week. Those were some of our observances. In social media, we had spotlights again on Safe Schools Week. Our High Five Friday was at Pinkham Elementary. We have Red Ribbon Week, National American Heritage Month, fallback reminders, and podcasts on parental involvement. And so continuing, National Psychology Week and Veterans Day round up our social media items for this month. And with that, Madam President, that concludes the spotlight.
Any board member comments? And again, the students will definitely tell you what they think, but I think it's really awesome that especially like the cellphone policy. They are, you know, who it affects a lot. So getting them involved in that solution is just an awesome way to approach it. So thank you for that. All right, item 4.2 CASP comparable data and promising practices. Superintendent Shrum.
All right, thank you, Madam President, board members, and our community. Now, we've shared with you our CASP data already. But what we weren't able to share before was how we compared with other districts in the state. We had our local data, but that had not been released. And so wanted to provide a little bit of an update here tonight on how we're doing as far as the district trends in comparison to the state and to other districts, as well as talk about some of our promising practices and how we're working to make sure that these promises or these bright spots and the good data aren't just isolated to certain schools, but are pervasive throughout our system. And so tonight I'll begin the report and turn it over to our Administrator of Teaching and Learning, Briann Phillips. And so just beginning again, going back to our board's beliefs and commitments, wanting to make sure we achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. And so tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about how we're able to do that. And if I could turn my page here, you see the agenda. We're going to talk about some of the comparable data, school site data, some bright spots, best practices, and then some of the things that are happening within our schools. So let me begin, and I'll take a minute to orient everyone to the chart because there is a lot on here. And so one of the things we wanted to show is how are we doing in comparison to the state? And how are we doing in comparison to the county? So what you're going to see here is Visalia Unified is in the blue. We're in the middle there. And you see from 21, 22 to 22, 23, 23, 24, you see the trend line. And so Visalia was 42%, 42%, and then 44%. You see the state flat, and you see the county dip and then increase just a little bit. What we want to do in Visalia is we want to see our students outperform not only the county, but the state. And so what this shows is that we're increasing the gap, not necessarily a positive thing in the county, but for us, increasing the gap between the county and closing the gap with the state. And then hopefully, we continue to show that growth and progress to move beyond the state. You're going to see here, now this is also math, and we know math is an area of focus, not only here in Visalia, but again, also across the state. This is set up the same way. You see the growth in math. In 21, 22, we were at 25%. This is students proficient and advanced, 27% to 28%. So obviously, we want to see more growth, but we see our trend line going in the right direction again, working up toward the state and then working to separate ourselves from the rest of the county. When it comes to how are we doing with other districts, it's often the case you will hear us talk about, you know, how did we do compared to other districts within Tulare County? Well, that's good to know. However, our district is very dissimilar to many other districts, right? We're the largest in the county. So if you're talking about comparing a system of 30,000 kids to a system of 1,000, there are a lot of differences in what you're able to do, how things are scaled. And so what we've done internally, and we use this as some of our benchmarking when we're studying other districts, when we're thinking about our initiatives, are who are some other districts across the state that are similar, both in size and percent of unduplicated students, right? And so you'll see there a list, and then what they did, just as another comparison point to see how we're doing, we see we rank above many of them when it comes to ELA, but in math, more toward the bottom half of that or right in the middle versus in the top half. So again, just another way to compare to see like, how are we doing with districts that are similar or more similar to us? And so now this, I won't take the time, this is in the board packet, but this now compares us with those other districts. So you see where we have some stretch districts and we put some stretch districts on here because we don't want to be satisfied with, you know, just you know, being higher than maybe some. We want to, what are some of those stretch districts that have similar data student-wise, but maybe exceed us in student performance? What can we learn from them? How can we advance our practices? And so we use this both for ELA, and then you'll see the same piece in math. So let's take a minute to talk a little bit about some of our bright spots within the district. And I know we have some principals here this evening who are very proud of both their teachers, their support staff, and their students. And so this is a past two-year comparison. We did a combination here to see a little bit of a trend, which is important. Want to acknowledge Shannon Ranch, 70%. That's the highest percentage of our students meeting or exceeding in 23, 24. Above average growth, six percentage points over two years in ELA. Want to show Houston here, Willow Glen, again, amazing growth, largest growth for Houston of all of our schools. We see Willow Glen with the second, Golden Oak, third, Highland and Mineral King. And what's important here is not only is high performance important, but also growth. As you know, some of our schools, Houston, have some of our most impacted students. And how do we help our students grow? They maybe have to grow further than average in some other schools. And so this is a testament to the teachers, the leaders, and others at those schools. So shout out to them. And then moving on to math, we see again Shannon Ranch, highest percentage of students meeting and exceeding. And then we see some different growth points here. We see Hurley with a 17 percentage point growth over the past couple of years. And what's powerful about that is that's not just one shot in time or one year, right? We can all have an anomaly. But can they sustain? Can someone who's high performing continue to sustain and grow? We see Crestwood, Manuel Hernandez, Global Learning Charter, and Golden Oak. So again, a huge shout out to those teachers, staff, and students for the great work that they're doing. When we go to middle schools, ELA and math, we see Ridgeview with our highest performing. We see La Jolla with our highest growth. And then same thing in math with those two schools. And then high schools had a chance to be at their faculty yesterday. VTEC, four percentage point growth in ELA. BCIS in ELA. ELA and then VTEC Mount Whitney and LD Amante and math. So again, uh. It's not just a one shot in time, but can you grow and sustain and continue to grow? And so what's happening? At some of these schools that we can capture and learn from? How does this factor into our strategic plan when we talk about advancing the action? Around every classroom being highly effective? What does that look like? And so I'm now going to turn it over to. Our administrator of teaching and learning, Brian Phillips, to take us through some of the things that we're doing and learning. To make sure that these bright spots extend throughout the district.
Well, good evening. We are thrilled to have so many families and community members here. I don't know that I've done a board presentation with such a full room. So I'm so excited. Um, to learn, um, for everyone to learn about the transformative work that's happening in our district. As VUSD embarks on designing and implementing the actions outlined in our strategic plan. We are grounded in the urgency of serving our students today. Our commitment to students, their families and their families centers on how learning happens. In every VUSD classroom. This is driven by our tier one embedded practices, which are a core action item. On our, um, in our strategic plan, embedded into a highly effective classroom. Tier one embedded practices are research-based instructional strategies that are observable. Through actions of both teachers and students across all content areas. These practices focuses, focus on five key areas. Routines and procedures, student engagement, differentiation, integrated in ELD instructional strategies and mindset. As highlighted earlier, Shannon Ranch has been a bright spot, particularly in student engagement. Uh, this has been achieved through intentional structures and practices. Their focus has resulted in the highest percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard in both ELA and mathematics. This is a testament to what is possible when tier one practices are prioritized. Tier one embedded practices are designed with. Designed for every student in every classroom, every day. When we are solid in tier one, we can significantly reduce the need for interventions, ensuring student learning every day. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, we committed to the board that we would be launch ready in August. This commitment, this was a commitment to teacher readiness. Providing our teachers with what they need to be ready to teach on the best first day ever. One such resource was having our pacing guides completed for K-six ELA mathematics, as well as every secondary core. Um, curriculum area. I put a sample up on the screen and I believe it's second grade mathematics. What you see in a pacing guide. Is you see our priority standards that are identified. You see our board adopted base curriculum outlined and a. And aligned per module as well as our supplemental curriculum that's been approved. What you'll also see is that we have. On-demand professional learning embedded into each module. Within these short learning opportunities, teachers can access. A deconstruction of the standards, learning progressions and instructional strategies using manipulatives and resources. To help improve student learning in their classrooms. Being unified in what we teach and declaring the declaration utilizing adopted curriculum ensures that every student. Regardless of their zip code. Has access to the appropriate supports they need in order to succeed in a premium education that our VUSD teachers provide. While our pacing guides address what we teach, in our district, we believe. That empowered educators create powerful learning experiences for students. That is why we have prioritized professional learning throughout all grade levels and contents. This is exemplified by the systematic change of integrating. Uh, eighty to a hundred minutes per week for elementary teachers to engage in professional learning. This intentional time allows teachers to focus on their site big rocks while also addressing self-identified areas of growth. This time is not just about learning, it's about collaboration, reflection and action. It's about giving teachers the tools and supports to deepen their practice and in turn improve student outcomes. To ensure alignment, each district division has strategically designed professional learning opportunities. Connected to our tier one embedded practices. These sessions foster consistent expectations while empowering educators to innovate and grow within their unique context. Together, this commitment to structured, meaningful professional learning fuels a culture of continuous improvement. Where every teacher feels equipped to lead and every student has the opportunity to thrive. At the heart of in our instruction is the commitment to data-driven decision-making. Through a comprehensive balanced assessment system, teachers can make real-time adjustments to enhance student learning. VUSD's Balanced Assessment System seemingly integrates summative informative assessments. Delivering actionable insights for site administrators, teachers and district leaders to support and strengthen student outcomes. Now, we are on our second year of our Balanced Assessment System. And it continues to evolve through a commitment to continuous improvement. Last spring, our teaching and learning team. In collaborations with teachers and principals, conducted a thorough review of all of the assessments administered throughout the year. This process, process clarified the purpose of each assessment and led to strategic decisions. At the elementary level to reduce the number of assessments. Through this reduction, the school site can place a stronger emphasis on their own site-developed common formative assessments. These provide real-time feedback, empowering teachers to make immediate and informed instructional decisions. That meet the needs of their students on a day-to-day basis. This intentional focus ensures that assessment data is meaningful, actionable and directly tied to improving student outcomes. So our Balanced Assessment System. Through our Balanced Assessment System, the data only matters if teachers are effectively using it to drive instructional decisions. Through our professional learning communities, we are creating conditions for effective use. From our theory of action, the board firmly believes in empowering teachers and staff to make instructional decision within. Within established guidelines to meet the diverse needs of every student. Through professional learning communities, we create a structure that supports collaboration and continuous improvement. This marks the second year of our investment into intentional district-wide focus on deepening this work. At every school site, we have guiding coalitions that have been established to identify their big rocks. And to lead in continuous improvement process to say, set, to stay centered on those goals. On the screen here, you'll see two images of our, of two PLCs at work, and these are from La Jolla Middle School. These La Jolla Middle School earlier this academic year were identified as a promising practice school by All Things PLC. Which is quite an accomplishment. They needed to show growth on the ELA and math and CASP for their whole school. But even drilling down into their unduplicated students, which we saw earlier that they did. They had the most growth in our middle schools. Additionally, they have to show that they have structures and procedures in place. In order to align with the three key ideas of PLCs. Their success serves as a model for all of our VUSD schools. When we take everything we just talked about, tier one embedded practices, priority standards, curriculum alignment, professional learning, assessment and PLCs. We've taken each of these components and built it into a proof of concept in our Math One Benchmark Pilot. Throughout last academic year, we reported on how our students were performing on benchmarks. That are standards aligned and match the rigor of the CASP. But the work in Math One was so much more than just assessments. We aligned the grades throughout the district. We targeted professional development in response to site-determined focused areas. We have equipped teachers, instructional coaches and administrators with tools to engage in data chats. We have engaged in classroom walks to see learning in action. And new this year, we have engaged our learning community teams to provide timely support to site leadership. Many of our Math Two teachers echoed the quote on this slide. Students entered Math Two prepared with strong skills in solving equations and justifying their steps. This foundation allowed them to confidently apply geometry terminology and solve complex problems. For those of us, me, me at heart, having math at my, math at my, in my heart, that speaks volumes to have our students prepared. To engage on day one in the rigor of Math Two. As a district, our data is trending in a positive direction. A testament to the hard work and dedication of our educators and students. However, it is important to acknowledge a critical area of concern. Our juniors and middle school students have not performed well in math. For two consecutive years, our CASP data has highlighted the urgency for accelerating our pilot. Into other grade levels. In response, we have expanded the structure of our Math One plan into Math Two. And extended it into the middle school grades, seven, eight and seven honors. This expansion represents much more than just curriculum adjustments. It reflects transformation of instructional and assessment practices. We are committed to leveraging the data to inform our decisions. Refine teaching strategies and ensure every student has the supports that they need to succeed in math. This work is essential and we remain steadfast in our commitment to seeing it through. In the twenty-four, twenty-five, well, this twenty-four, twenty-five school year marks the second year of implementing systematic phonics instruction in kindergarten. Through second grade using foundations, which is a multi, multimodal program that integrates reading, writing and handwriting. This approach aligns to the science of reading. Providing explicit structured phonics instruction to develop foundational literacy skills. Early anecdotal feedback from teachers this year highlights promising trends. Students are demonstrating growth in decoding and reading fluency. While it may be a few years before we see the full impact of three years of phonics instruction. Reflected in our state assessment. This initiative underscores our district commitment to equip every student with the tools they need for literacy success. Looking ahead, our strategic plan includes the development of a comprehensive literacy plan that is anchored in found. Foundational reading. This plan will encompass three com- critical components. Teaching students how to read, increasing reading comprehension and strengthening their ability to write effectively. The first step in this plan will take shape in the fall of twenty twenty-five. With the implementation of a new writing curriculum. A writing committee is currently being formed to select a program that not only teaches the mechanics of writing. But also builds students' capacity to write across genres. Preparing them for academic and real-world communication. We look forward to sharing more updates on this important work in future board meetings. While our district's data reflects a positive trend, we are not satisfied. Our mission, every student learning every day. Represents our unwavering commitment to our students and families as we work towards our vision. Every student empowered to achieve future success. To fulfill this vision, we must evolve from a collection of individual successes. To a unified system of excellence. Together, we are shaping the future where best practices become the standard across all our schools, ensuring consistency and equity. In every classroom. This is the work of our strategic plan. Through these collective efforts, we guarantee our students not only access to the highest quality education. But also the supports they need to succeed. On our watch, we are steadfast in dedic, in. In our dedication to their success every step of the way. Question?
Board member comments, questions?
I have, uh, two questions for Superintendent Trum. Hi, Mr. Trum. Um, I know that this was, was pointed out, but I, I just want to make sure that we ask, um. Our board has indicated to you that we're happy with the growth that we've made. Would you say that we've done that? As a board?
Pleased with the growth, but definitely through setting, as, as the community may know, our board has set the first, for the first time ever. Five-year performance targets. Um, that are far beyond where we're currently performing. So. Uh, pleased with the growth, but has set expectations for this district to. Continue to grow through those, uh, priority outcomes that are connected to our, to our strategic plan.
Okay. And so just to be very clear, through us setting those, our board has never given you the impression at any time that we're happy with where we're at.
Oh, no, none of us are, right, exactly. Oh yeah, I say all the time that, um. And I think, uh, Brian mentioned it, one of my sayings here is pleased but not satisfied.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Trum.
Thank you. Um, I had a question, Brianne, and, um, I think I had asked Mark about this. I know we're still in the middle of the semester right now. But I know we were phasing out the, the requirement, the strict requirement of having to take some sort of remedial math before having to take Math One and, and just giving students the opportunity to take it from the get-go. Um, so far have we been seeing more positive results in terms of allowing students to take that class, um, without having to take a sort of remedial class before that?
Yeah, so our data is some, when we look at our Math One data from last year and our Math One data this year, we see more students, um, meeting or exceeding standard currently. We do not have. Um, what was called principles of math. All students are in Math One. Um, and so we are seeing, um, our students pro- progress, um, within. Within, uh, within Math One, we do have additional supports in place because. Within any circumstance, we do have to, um, have additional layers of support, uh, for our, for all of our kiddos.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I know that we've got a long road ahead of us and, but we're making some inroads and I just appreciate all the extra. Training and the, you know, the meetings and just working together. I, I do have one question. I, I'm just so pleased with the growth on here. I'm, I was just, wow. Shannon Ranch and, and some of our elementary schools, are, are we sharing what they're doing there? And I, I know you kind of alluded to that. To some of our other sites so that they, um, also are showing this great growth?
Yeah, absolutely. So our sites do work within different PLC groups and they share and observe the growth, observe different campuses, but then we also. Um, go and learn from the school sites. Um, that's part of, uh, the work that we do with, with Shannon Ranch. But then also when we look at our UVA schools engaging and learning from our school sites and their growth. Um, so that we bring their practices to us, not us saying this is the practice to do.
Thank you.
Um, oh. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Trum.
Kind of piggybacking on, um. Board member Casper Salerno. The interesting thing too, that I, I think all of our principals need to know that. When we meet together and work on these things with you, Brianne and, and all of our staff. There's a statistician's idea that, um, you can only see X number of growth percentage-wise and it's usually. Very small. And we wrestled with as a board, uh, where we want to be and what is reality. And kind of hit between there because all of us would like to see a hundred percent. And yet that's probably never going to happen. Uh, we don't see that even at the, uh, top school districts in California. They're where Palo Alto is like at eighty-eight percent or something. Where we would like to say that's our expectation is that every student is going to actually reach those benchmarks at the very highest level possible. So I want to remind everyone that the number that you've seen in our Visiliar Forward. Uh, was not just throw a dart at the dartboard and see where it lands. We wrestled with what. Statisticians tell us is real and possible. And we stretched that because we want to see, as we've said, we are not pleased. And we, we all received an email today from a concerned community member. Um, who likes to constantly remind us of that, but. Let it be known, we are not satisfied. But we have made so many, uh, how can I say it? Layers, prongs, I, the, the efforts that's being laid out. To improve what we want to see the outcomes of our students is multi-layered. It doesn't, it's not just limited to math facts. We saw that today at one of the schools that I visited. It's not limited to even best practices. It is. Multiple things from pre-K as well. as well as all the way through eleventh grade.
Um, to jump back on a few of the, so the math one students or the students that went straight into math one, will they take CASP next year?
No.
No.
No, so.
They're another year out.
Well, I mean, our ninth graders do, well, our CASP is taken by juniors. Our current math one is freshmen.
Okay, so another two years out before.
We are one year away from from our math one pilot being impacted for the CASP. The caveat to that is is the three-year math requirement. Our freshmen, our current math one students are the students that have a requirement of three years of math.
Okay, the current ones this year, so we're a couple of years out. Okay. Um, and kind of on that same idea of bright spots, are we reaching out or, you know, stealing what we can from like Murrieta and Chino Valley? I mean, sixty percent in ELA and forty nine Chino had percent in math. I mean, that's pretty impressive.
Absolutely. As we're going into our research and design portion of the strategic plan, our directors and their teams, that is part of their work, is to look into different counties that are similar and really dig into what are they doing so that we can bring some of those practices to us?
And last, it's not really a question for tonight, but as I'm looking at this assessment plan, I'm, because I ready seems to be maybe an indicator, like a benchmark indicator towards CASP. At some point in the future, can we see, is there an actual correlation between I ready and CASP? Like, are if a student's advanced on I ready, are they going to be advanced on CASP? And just just something kind of to throw out there for the future, but other than that.
It does, that their research does show that there is correlation, but we can do a dig a deeper dive at a board study session or in that way to provide that information around the alignment.
Awesome. Um, and.
Go ahead, go ahead. Or again, I think my my last sort of that I wanted to make sure that our community understands, especially because, understand, especially because as you indicated, we have so many members with us here tonight, is that what I think kind of in layman terms, what you're really trying to tell us tonight is that while we have bright spots and while we have you know, these different great things happening at different campuses, our ultimate goal is to make sure that it doesn't matter what teacher you have for a particular year, it doesn't matter what school your child attends, that our focus and our goal is to create a district-wide, putting systems in place that ensure that everyone has the same access to this growth, to this expectation of academic progress. Is that correct?
You said that perfectly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for this report and all that went into it. And I will throw in a little bit of just kudos that we are actually a third of the county also, so we're kind of bringing up their average just a little, just just saying. All right, general public comment. General public comment on any topic not on the agenda may be heard at this time. If you have public comment on any item listed on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to share your comments at that time, at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments for general public comment to no more than three minutes and individual topics to twenty minutes. To comply with the Brown Act California's Open Public Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I will say, I know that there's a number of people in the audience here to speak about items concerning facilities and global learning charter. We'll ask for those comments on those items after each of those is called, so we ask that you hold your comments until that time. I'd also encourage you to fill out a green paper or green form and give it to Ms. Andrew. Um, is there any public comment related to a school topic not on tonight's agenda? I do have one, and I'm going to hope I say your name right, Cecily Granio. Did I say that right? Come on up. Thank you.
Oh, I'm nervous. Okay. Is this too close or is this fine?
Perfect.
Okay. Um, oh, my time started. Okay, so my name is Cecily. I'm the mother of two students at Royal Oaks Elementary, one in fifth grade and the other is in TK. I come before you today to express concerns about the mainstreaming of special special needs children and the communication breakdown between the administration and parents, which has left my family and others feeling helpless and unsafe. Since the beginning of the school year, it became apparent to myself and several other parents that there was a child in the class and on the playground who was in need of extra support due to diagnosis and behavioral issues. This child's actions quickly became a regular topic of concern in our households, especially in the weeks leading up to his removal. Multiple reports from my child and others indicated that the child was displaying violent, erratic, and unsafe behaviors. These included destroying classroom materials, throwing items, kicking other students, scratching staff, and pushing children both in the classroom and on the playground. A child was also physically attacked, having her hair pulled and being, and she was bit on the shoulder. These behaviors were becoming increasingly alarming. On Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, I received a phone call from the vice principal at two twenty three PM, just as I arrived for pickup. He informed me that my daughter had been inappropriately touched by a student, which my daughter later confirmed was the same child. I was shocked and distressed to learn that the child had put his hand down the front end of my daughter's pants. I immediately asked for the details of the incident, and I was told that it had occurred about an hour before I was contacted. I took immediate action by filing a police report with the campus officer, but I was informed that due to the child's age, no legal charges could be pursued. I was also told that my daughter was too young to be considered a victim in this situation, and the child involved was too young to be held criminally responsible. The following day, I met with the principal and the vice principal. Unfortunately, our meeting felt more like a session where we were going back and forth explaining our positions while the administration gave politically correct responses and emphasized and emphasized confidentiality over addressing the safety and wellbeing of my child. When I asked if I could be assured that my daughter would be safe upon returning to school, no promise was made. As a result, I decided to remove her from school, refusing to send her back until the child in question was either removed or suspended. By the end of that week, the child was in fact removed from the school. However, many parents, including myself, were left with several important questions. When do our children become the priority in situations like this? Why was this child not immediately suspended after placing his hand down a young girl's pants? Why are parents not notified right away when these incidences occur? Um, why does the district continue to place special needs children in general classrooms without adequate support such as personal aids? Do the actions of these children have to escalate to crisis level before action is taken? And why is there no clear system in place for protecting the safety of all the students, especially those who are vulnerable? Our children go to school to learn to grow, to learn to grow, to not experience trauma. As parents, we are trusting the school to keep our children safe, and it's concerning that it took such a serious incident before any action was taken. We need to ensure that no child has to face the same distressing experiences that my daughter has gone through. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other general public comment? Okay, consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from consent agenda? All right, if seen none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion.
On a motion by board member Casper Saleno and a second by board member Gamoyen.
Motion passes with student board rep voting yes, seven oh.
Okay, our student representative report, Mr. Diego Medina Gutierrez from El Diamante.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diego Medina Gutierrez. I'm from El Diamante High School, and it's my honor to complete the student representative report for tonight's meeting. I'll go ahead and get started with El Diamante. El Diamante ASB hosted the first battle week kickoff at eighteen fifty-two Soccer City on October twenty eighth. There was a friendly competition against Golden West, including students from both football teams, water polo, drum line, cheer, dance, choir, and mascots. A special shout out to Stephen Amundson for emceeing and bringing more positive energy to the exciting and competitive atmosphere. Six students from El Diamante Choir's program were selected for the regional honor choir and performed on Saturday, November ninth at Clovis North High School. In honor of World Kindness Week on November thirteenth, El Diamante accepted the challenge of creating a kindness chain and displayed it along the entrance so that everyone could see how much kindness El Diamante minors have. A student task force meeting was held during homeroom on November thirteenth. Student representatives met with administration and discussed how they can create a better transition for incoming freshmen, how they can inform students more about college for both our upperclassmen and lowerclassmen, and a positive and a possible student ambassador program. And now moving on to Golden West High School. On Monday, October twenty eighth, Golden West High School participated in their first ever kickoff event with El Diamante at eighteen fifty-two. The event featured outstanding performances from the dance team, cheer team, drum line, ASB, and the football team, all coordinated with the support of their head football coach and Mr. Lambert. This collaborative effort resulted in an incredible show and a victorious start to their rivalry week. The week continued with exciting noon time activities, music, and fun for everyone. The highlight was on October thirty first, when both teachers and students joined the excitement, dressing up in their favorite costumes and participating in a fun teacher treat event during lunch. It was a fantastic showcase on creativity and unique costumes. The Battle for the Saddle Game was on November first and was an electrifying event filled with school spirit and intense competition. The energy was undeniable as Golden West High School faced off against El Diamante with unwavering determination and support from dedicated fans. Their team played exceptionally and secured an impressive victory. It was a proud moment for the Golden West community, making a triumphant chapter in their history and keeping the saddle at home. Looking ahead, Golden West High School is excited to host their annual Adopt a Star program. This cherished tradition brings school community together to support local families in need during the holiday season. The stars in the program come from all their feeder schools, representing specific wishes or needs of children and families in their extended community. By adopting and fulfilling these wishes, we they spread joy and kindness, ensuring everyone experiences the magic and warmth of the holidays. This program beautifully showcases the generosity and unity that defines Golden West. Moving on to Mount Whitney High School. Although Redwood captured the high this year, Whitney triumphed in spirit. It was a clean sweep for Mount Whitney in the car decorating contest, dunking challenge, dress up days, and social media competitions. The pioneer pride was unstoppable. Mount Whitney will host the CTE showcase, highlighting highlighting all career and technical education programs available on campus. Students will have the opportunity to explore pathways and participate in hands-on demonstrations. The visual and performing arts FAPA department will also be featured, adding creativity to the showcase. Moving on to athletic highlights from Mount Whitney High School. The boys' water polo team made an impressive appearance in the Valley CIF Central Section Playoffs. Dolores Carter, a standout Mount Whitney volleyball player, was honored at the Tlarry County Character Counts Awards. She received the Fairness Award along with scholarship funds for her achievement. And several pioneer athletics will compete in the Valley Race this Thursday at Woodward Park, showcasing their talent on a regional stage. Moving on to Redwood High School. Redwood ASB and Mount Whitney ASB partnered together during Cowhide Week and hosted a successful Taylor's Hot Dog Dunking Competition and a new online competition called The Road to How to Cowhide, The Ultimate Showdown, where each school earned points for student dress up days, participation, and online participation. The boys' varsity water polo team competed in the Division Two Valley Championship game in Hanford last weekend. The Redwood Choir Holiday Home Tour fundraiser is happening December fourteenth. There will be six beautifully decorated homes you can tour throughout Visalia while enjoying some festive refreshments and caroling at each home by your very own Ranger Choir students. The Redwood Bands Day Send-Off Night is Thursday, November twenty first, this week at eight thirty PM in the Mineral King Bowl. They will present their show one last time before they head to WBA State Championships and pursue their goal of placing in the top three against some of the best bands in California. Redwood hosted its first Ranger Summit with a hundred hundreds of people in attendance. This event was open to all current and future Redwood students and their families. The day was filled with engaging workshops over twenty-eight community organizations and opportunities for students and families to learn more about Redwood's clubs and resources. Workshop sessions included academic support, mental health and well-being, college and career readiness, parent-student collaboration. The day ended off with a wonderful Thanksgiving lunch, celebrating the importance of community partnership to support student success. Moving on to VCIS, the VCIS Performing Arts Students in Dance, Acting, Vocal, and Rock Band are preparing for the upcoming Fall Showcase on December seventh at the El Diamante Theater. VCIS staff, students, and families continue to prepare for the move on their new campus. Students will start their spring semester on January thirteenth at the new campus. VCIS looks forward to having the community attend the ribbon cutting ceremony date to be determined. A huge thank you to the facility teams, purchasing teams, tech services, and custodial grounds utility utility team staff. Moving on to VTEC, VTEC ASB is looking forward to their community building activities, which begin in December. One of the activities is a door decorating contest. VTEC ASB is sponsoring a cozy night cozy movie night, an opportunity for their students to build culture and community on campus. VTEC is preparing its award-winning float for the Candy Cane Lane Parade, and one hundred twenty-eight VTEC students signed up for dual enrollment classes this spring, which is equivalent to fifty percent of their student population. And then I'd like to conclude the student representative report by recapping on the work of the United Students Association of Visalia, also known as USAV, and the Superintendent Advisory Board Group. So again, recapping on November fourth, all three superintendent student advisory groups gathered at the Oaks Professional Building from nine AM to twelve PM. This event brought together fifty-four elementary students, twenty-two middle school students, and fifty high school students, altogether over one hundred twenty students, providing them a valuable opportunity to connect with district leaders and Superintendent Schrum. The elementary students focus on topics such as school culture, student engagement, and safety. Meanwhile, the middle school and high school students examined VUSD's cell phone policy, California laws on cell phone use in school, and cell phone policies from nearby districts. Following this research, we began developing a survey to gather input from staff and students at our schools with the goal of providing feedback to the board on VUSD's cell phone policy. This day concluded with a discussion led by Mr. Schrum on the strategic plan and facility plan, both vital to Visalia Unified's future. This conversation will continue in upcoming meetings. The high school USAV group meets monthly, and I'm excited to keep learning and to share my voice in these meaningful discussions. And good evening, and then thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to share my voice as well as be a representative for students across Visalia Unified, and thank you.
Thank you, and I hope they fed you too. Um, board member reports, uh, board member Belt, I'll start at that side.
Thank you, President Gaby. Uh, one of the things that you've heard me talk about quite a bit, I've enjoyed going to our loft programs, which are the interview opportunities for sophomores in academies to actually talk to. We call them industry partners. I like to call them real life professionals. The last week, it was on Friday, another level of that took place where the group from El Diamante Media Arts Department, Mr. Carr, Mr. Watermura, and of course, our director, Mrs. Mello, went along to visit Winsong Productions in Fresno. And while they're there, they actually not only had demonstrations, but they had on hands-on many seminars on how the magic happens with pixels. And a former Golden West graduate, my son, was one of those presenters, a professional at Winsong. So I was rather connected as well as excited that our sophomores from LD Media Arts Department, thank you for going and seeing what it real world's like, and you actually can make a future in graphic arts. The the number of principles that I want to highlight real quickly, seven of them, and since our last board meeting, I want to thank each one of them for being able to visit their campuses and seeing what's happening with students. That's Principal Crabtree in Crestwood, Principal Mendoza at Cottonwood, Principal Binghamman at Shannon Ranch, Aguilera, Principal at Ivanhoe, Principal Duval of Mineral King, and Principal Lambert at Golden West, Principal Franco at Valley Oak, oh, and Valley Oak now has a new award. If you've not seen or heard of this, it's now called the Battle for the Horseshoe. It's now a new addition to the Battle of the Saddle and the Cowhide. And, oh, yes, and Franco proudly showed it to us. It's at Valley Oak right now, since they won their game. The and also, of course, got to go to Principal Bronze VTEC to see what's happening with those students there. I want to highlight one small thing, two things, Quarterback Club last week. Uh, if you've never heard of that, it highlights. Uh, if you've never heard of that, it highlights our football season of all four of our high schools, plus Central Valley Christian and COS. Uh, these community members come together and highlight each week. And, uh, this week, we had the, what do they call it, Players of the Year and Coach of the Year, which Travis Anderson from Golden West was picked actually the Coach of the Year. And this Friday, I'm sure you you've heard about it, a very unusual opportunity in the CIF uh, Central Section Finals of CBC playing Golden West at the Golden West Stadium. The second thing though, I want to highlight is about a month and a half ago, some uh, people, um, over about five, six hundred of them who were at LJ Williams and experienced a catastrophic air conditioning breakdown. The good news in the consent agenda that we just passed is that it's being fixed and not an easy fix. The chiller is the only way to actually, oh, that's interesting, only way to chill. Uh, we don't have a regular AC system, we have a chiller system. And for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's being replaced and repaired so that all of our students, families and the community can enjoy reasonably cool air. Thank you, Eric. And LJ Williams, one of our most, I I I have to call the shining gem of our facilities at Visalia Unified. And it actually came out of reserve funds because we have been very frugal about systems so that when an emergency comes up like this, we're able to take care of it. Well, thank you also, Nathan, for keeping the purse string so tight.
Thank you, Board Member Case Beer Salino.
No report.
Board Member Gamoyan?
Um, I'd like to thank the principals for letting us come and visit schools. Um, today I was at Green Acres and I saw what I really loved that, um, Principal Corless, um, is doing a co-plan, co-teach with her ELD students, which I thought was really cool, um, because she's got the newcomer academy there, so that was really fun to see. And then I was at Mineral King and, uh, Principal Duval should, I was very interested in seeing what a number talk looked like. And that was really fun too. So they have to analyze, like, it was sixteen times forty. And they're right, they're talking about the different ways to solve it, and I had to pull out my phone and go sixteen times forty because I couldn't do it in my head. So that was really fun. Uh, last Friday night, I do want to talk, just share a little bit about last Friday night, the game between Kingsburg and Golden West. In the very last, uh, seconds of the game, Golden West, okay, I'm gonna give you a little play-by-play here, okay? So the last ten seconds of the game, um, our quarterback, I mean, our running back got across the goal line. I thought it was a touchdown, but the ref said it was not a touchdown. So they brought it back and put ten seconds on the clock. I don't know why the heck they did that. And and it actually was one second on the clock. Were you there, John? Yeah, one second on the clock, and then Kay Sanders went over, scored a touchdown, the time was out, and I thought, okay, now it's tied. But I didn't know you still get to do your point after, and Golden West kicked the point after and won the game. That was so exciting. It was worth freezing my butt off.
But you're not biased or anything. I thought you were gonna like reenact it for us here. All right, uh, Board Member Odo.
Can't top that, so no, no report.
Board Member Vegas.
Uh, thank you, President Gaby. I'll keep mine, uh, brief. I got the opportunity to visit, uh, Ridgeview Middle School alongside Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson. Uh, so thank you to Dr. Joyner, uh, and all of our teachers doing great work at Ridgeview Middle School. We got to visit, uh, a lot of different classrooms, got to see learning in action. I remember walking into one classroom and um, there was a movie playing. And at first you might say like, oh, a movie, right? Like, what, what does that have to do? But, uh, it was really great seeing students engage, uh, working on questions as they watched this movie, which was actually related to a lesson plan that they were covering surrounding the Holocaust. Um, and seeing students actively engaging with media and different types of learning was just great, um, seeing that in every classroom. Uh, also had the opportunity this past Saturday to visit the, uh, CSVC, the California State Band Championship, uh, NorCal Finals. Uh, so we know that, um, Mount Whitney and Redwood were at SoFi Stadium. And so I would definitely also want to give a shout out to El Diamante and Golden West who competed this past Saturday. El Diamante taking second in their division, uh, Golden West taking fourth, and a very competitive division with twelve, uh, schools just in that one division. Um, so shout out to all of the band directors, staff, uh, families, volunteers, parents. Uh, got to see our, our VAPA Director Alan McFarland out there also supporting all our schools. So, uh, it was just really great to see all these performers, um, culminating their season of just hours and hours of rehearsal and performances and practicing at home, uh, that all started in band camp last August. So major shout out to all of our performers. Also wanted to, uh, thank Principal Win, John Arasner at GLC, uh, for inviting me to come and speak to some of our English language learners in an assembly. Um, and really give kudos to, um, that site, which has just reimagined the way we think about um, English language learners and and really this concept of being bilingual and bringing in um, knowing two different languages as a strength and an asset as opposed to a lens of deficiency. Um, and so that was a really great, uh, opportunity. And finally, just wanted to give my thanks to, um, Neighborhood Church. I was able to attend uh, a soccer tournament and the final kind of soccer game. I think, uh, Board Member Gamoyan might have been there as well. Um, where we got to see just lots of families coming together, um, a volunteer group, uh, Low Rider Club, who was also there, who helped sponsor the uniforms for our kiddos at Houston Elementary School. Um, so I just really want to say, uh, thank you to Neighborhood Church, the Neighborhood Degree Program for that partnership, uh, with Houston Elementary. Um, and just all the amazing things that are going on at that site. So, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Board Clerk Nayler.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, thank the community and also for our staff for, I attended the Ridgeview, uh, Facilities Plan Community Meeting, and it was so well-attended, and we just really appreciate, you know, all of the responses on our website and also, um, attending those meetings. And I I just kind of went around and just listened to the tables and the table talk, and it just gives us a feel for what what you're thinking. And so, and that that it's a hard decision. Um, a lot goes into this, you know, the facility plan, the strategic plan, and just appreciate all the input, um, and continue to do that, please. Uh, we also had the Joint City, um, meeting with the school board, um, this last month, and I always appreciate that. It gives us an opportunity to work with our partners and and find out what's going on with them, and they can get a little feel for what we're doing and um, highlight some of the things that cross over between the two. Um, I also attended with, uh, Board Member Belt, uh, Crestwood and Cottonwood Creek. It was the first time I'd ever been to Cottonwood Creek. I I I've gone to all the schools at that. I have never been to this school, but I just appreciate Principal Mendoza giving us a tour. There was a science, a class outside doing a, an activity, and the kids were engaged, and they just, it it was just a nice, um, it was a nice visit. Um, also, Principal Crabtree, thank you. The classrooms were engaging. I mean, I go in there, I think, wow, I don't remember my elementary school being, you know, this, so much going on and kids, you know, all helping each other and talking to each other. So I just appreciate our teachers working so hard to get our kids engaged and to have that learning going on every single day for every student. So thank you.
Yes, um, and on that note, just quickly, um, earlier we highlighted the schools that made a lot of growth and just another shout out to them. That doesn't happen like by random or chance. That's really effective leadership and like a staff committed to being learners themselves and learning and doing what's best for kids. And so all of you schools that, I mean, everybody's working hard, but we had some up there that just made, um, you know, some tremendous growth and and thank you for that, and thank you from our students. Um, and Superintendent Shrum.
All right. Thank you, President Gaby. Just, uh, this will be our last, uh, meeting. Of course, we have our Thanksgiving holiday break next week. So we want to wish, uh, all of our students, our staff, uh, a great holiday and enjoy time with uh, family, or if you're getting away from family, enjoy that time, whatever, whatever, you know, might apply to you. But we hope that you have a great week. I know I'm enjoying, uh, some of my, uh, nieces and nephews are coming out for the week, so very excited about that. So be safe, and we look forward to seeing everybody back, uh, in December as we work hard to close out the year strong in those final three weeks. Um, and again, I also want to echo, uh, our last kind of football team standing with, uh, Golden West. And so, um, you know, we we value all of our schools, uh, in our community. Um, however, um, I do think public schools are where it's at, and so I do want to, uh, wish Golden West, uh, good luck on Friday night. Uh, and so again, Happy Thanksgiving. That concludes, uh, our comments.
All right, uh, recommended expulsions. May I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
A motion. Second.
Uh, and a motion by Board Member Case Beer Salino and a second by Board Member Gamoyan.
Motion passes seven oh with, um, Student Board Rep abstaining.
Recommended suspended expulsions. May I have a motion to approve the recommended suspended expulsion?
Still moved. I'll second.
And a motion by Board Member Gamoyan and a second by Case Beer Salino.
Motion passes seven oh with, um, Student Board Rep abstaining.
Okay, Facilities Plan Short Term Options. Um, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, President Gaby, Board Members, members of our community. I'm pleased this evening, uh, to, uh, share Eric Care. We'll be presenting our short-term Facility Plan recommendations. Uh, as many folks know, these recommendations have been developed in accordance with board policy and other factors that, uh, he will detail in this report. Uh, just a couple of interesting facts that, um, you know, I think have led to the moment we're in. It's been about nine years, uh, since the last major district boundary changes beyond small adjustments when, uh, Denton Elementary was built. And in that time, uh, significant changes have occurred within our community, including increased growth in certain areas, which has resulted in many of our school sites exceeding their intended capacity while some are underutilized. And just as a, another interesting fact in that about nine-year period, over five thousand four hundred homes, uh, had been built during that time. Uh, and not equally across the district. I'm proud of the progress we've made as a district, excited to share some of the outreach efforts you'll hear about tonight as well as opportunities we're developing to support students and families who might be impacted by the boundary changes. And while these do provide relief for some of our most impacted impacted sites, it's important to note that even those areas will still continue to grow. So these short-term recommendations are designed to address many of our most urgent issues, but also provide time for us to continue to work on our long-range facilities plan that we'll be engaging with the community in the spring and have more community meetings around. And so finally, just want to acknowledge, a lot of people have worked really hard on this, many, many multiple hours with data, with growth, with all of those things. But, uh, in particular, I want to give a, a huge shout out to our Director of Facilities, Steve Pinya. Um, I know he's probably in here somewhere, uh, just countless hours on this, and also our demographer, Ken Reynolds, uh, who many folks know has worked with the district for many years, uh, as well. And of course, many, many other, other people uh, that, uh, have contributed to this. So I'm going to turn it over now to Eric Care, our Chief Operations Officer, to take us through the presentation.
Good evening, President Gaby, Superintendent Shrum. Thank you for that. Eric Care, Chief Operations Officer. So Chuck, if we can get, there we go. So we're going to go through this, uh, deck. There's a, there are, uh, there'll be some slides that I'll spend more time on and some that we'll go through kind of quickly. Um, and I do want to add that this will be, uh, posted up on our website tomorrow, uh, in the morning, this deck in its entirety on our engage dot VUSD website. So let's get started. We'll dive right in. Our work is is guided by our foundations and our and our core beliefs and commitments, so this work aligns directly with that. And this is a slide that we, we always, uh, we always shared all of our presentations. Um, here's our agenda. So we'll talk about our process. You can see there, we've got some projected states. We've got some concepts that we're going to talk about, but then the meat of it will be the recommendations and then some milestones. We'll talk a little bit about financials and next steps as well, and then at the end, we'll be able to, uh, have the board, if they have any questions. So a little bit of how we started, um, almost a year ago, um, our team started this work, um, with assessments. Um, we went out to school sites, we had all of our school sites assessed, and, um, we started that work. Um, in April and May, we, uh, started to look at funding needs and utilizations. We started to develop some scenarios in June. And then last, uh, in August and September, um, we went out to community workshops, and that's how we kind of started this process, and that takes us up to November. So it's just about a year that we've been working on this. Um, there are some of the groups that were part of it. Here's just some shots of us in action. Uh, we had a working group composed of, uh, staff from around the district. Uh, the bulk of them came from our learning and leadership team because we wanted to have a, a, a lot of input from our site leaders. So let's talk a little bit about our current and our projected state. Now, this slide is probably hard to read for you on the screen. Um, but this is our projected, this is our current conditions. So the blue boxes, uh, show our sites that are, that are overutilized, that are over one hundred percent in utilization. And I do want to point out that these numbers represent those schools without leased portals. And so this is how the school was built. This is the permanent capacity of the school. So you can see that we've got several schools highlighted in blue there, elementary schools on this page that are over one hundred percent utilization as we go out to those three years to twenty-seven and twenty-eight. On the next slide, we're going to show the middle schools, um, and the high schools. And so you can see two of our middle schools are impacted out in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and three of our high schools continue to be impacted. Again, this is without portables. This is their permanent capacity, which allows for, uh, all the infrastructure, cafeteria, parking, things like that, to have enough capacity to cover all of those students. Um, and this is, again, without portals. So some of the factors that we consider as we, as we do this work, um, there are three big categories um, that kind of compose the factors as we, as we did this work. So first of and foremost is our board policy. We have a board policy that talks about this, five-one-one-six. There are other factors that we talk about that that are impacted whether a site is over or underutilized. And then community feedback. So those three buckets are, um, are the three main categories. And so I'm going to spend a little bit of time on each of those, just kind of talking and building out those a little bit more. So our board policy takes into account several things. And so really about utilizing efficiently our school facilities, being able to administer them, and then lots of other factors that are included in there. So enrollment, capacity, feeder patterns, community input you can see is is included there, as well as transportation capacity. And then the last one is really this idea of our community and neighborhood schools, especially at the elementary school level. We build schools into neighborhood. They're designated, um, and when a new development is planned and approved by the city, it has to have a school location in into it. So you think of all the new communities and our, and our newer schools, especially on the northwest side of town, and even some of our older communities, those schools are embedded in that community and that. So that's one of our foundational ideas, and it's in our board policy. Um, some of the other factors that are considered here, English language learners, adjustments for long-term neighborhood schools again, and then minimizing the amount of disruption to students. So minimizing the number of students and schools that are impacted by boundary changes. And again, uh, considering those transportation costs and student routes. This is a slide, these two slides for middle and high school talk about our socio-economically, so our unduplicated and free and reduced lunch, um, uh, percentages. These just show the current enrollment and then the proposal, which I'll show you in a few minutes. It just shows that the variance is is within, is within, uh, a, a, a range that we're comfortable with. It's about between four point eight and five point one percent on the middle school. At the high school, it's almost flat, it's point three percent. So even on the proposed plan, we maintain that, uh, that, that, that makeup. So some of the other things that are impacted when a site is overutilized, so this is that kind of that third, those, those common factors. Cafeteria, those of you principals here know that an overt, that an impacted school, uh, causes staggered lunches or additional lunches or elementary students having to maybe start lunch at ten o'clock in the morning or eat lunch until one or after one o'clock in the afternoon. Library has impacted the number of options for students. Uh, parking and traffic, we have lots of schools that are impacted with congestion within the neighborhood, limited parking, and then restrooms and other infrastructure, overuse, wait times, kids not being able to access them, not having enough. So this is that notion that just because we add capacity to a school, if we don't consider some of these other factors, that they are impacted as well. And then that third, that third category was the community feedback. And so we're really proud of this. We conducted eight community workshops, um, out in the community. We went out to the community. You can see those there. We had over two hundred individuals attend those workshops in person. Um, we had nineteen hundred contributions to the survey on our website. Um, eleven thousand ratings on the, the, uh, the Community Thoughts and fourteen thousand hits on the Facilities Plan webpage. And that number's probably higher now, uh, because we made this slide for, uh, the fifteenth. Um, here's just a couple of shots from those community meetings. Again, uh, we went to eight different sites, eight different locations. Um, and then last, I want to talk about before we get into the actual, uh, recommendations. This is the, this is the This is the, this is the community feedback. And so the community was asked to rank these five categories. And this is how they ranked them. So reducing transfers into Redwood, boundary adjustments, new construction, adding a boundary to GLC, and Oak Grove becoming a K6. So the community ranked those and that's the rank. So the top is the top ranking and the last one. But again, this is just one aspect of it. And so that was, that's kind of all the background information. So what we're going to go to now are our short term recommendations. So this first slide is what we're kind of calling the plan on a page. On the left hand side, it lists the key issues. And so Annie Mitchell and Denton and Riverway, that's that northwest, those impacted sites. GLC being underutilized, Oak Grove exceeding capacity, reduce denting capacity and offset the development in the northwest area. So Denton, we know is impacted. Relieving Green Acres, Ridgeview overcapacity and Redwood overcapacity. And so the recommendations on the middle there, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because we're going to go into the maps in just a minute. And it's probably going to be easier to understand than just on the single page. The next page is a, we saw this earlier. I talked about the projected or the utilization current and projected without portables. And this slide, you will see this is the result of this recommended, these recommendations and our new utilization. And so what it shows, all the same blue boxes as on the last slide that had this information. But it shows that all of these schools, with the exception of Denton, and I'll talk about that in a second, are now well within that they're they're around that 80%. They're certainly less than 100. And it allows us to have some space and better utilizes those schools. Couple of things on this slide, this does include the least portables. The other thing you'll notice that the Riverway Elementary projected utilization is very low. That includes the six portables that are there. So I'm going to share in some later slides how we'll be able to potentially remove some portables and save some money for the district. But additionally, in the red, in the Ridgeview area, we know that there are 250 homes coming in the next three years. And then on the outgoing years out to three to seven years, we've got an additional 881 homes that are going to be there. So we will need that capacity at Riverway. And that's in their current boundary. And then the same projections for the middle schools. You can see they're all under 100. We've got Ridgeview still at 91, which is a little on the high side. And same thing with Green Acres, but but under 100. And then the high schools as well. This does, this talks about the reduction of the 150 transfers into Redwood, which I will talk about in just a couple of minutes. So that's a lot going kind of fast, but I do want to now get into the maps. And the first maps that I'm going to show you, I'm going to show three maps that talk about the elementary, middle and high school boundaries, and they're going to be the map of the district. And so we're going to go quickly through those. But what you'll notice on these maps is there are numbered areas which are the proposed changes. And each number, I will go into an individual map after we show these three, and I'll explain each of those specific numbers and what it entails in that proposal. So here we go. So this is the elementary map. This is the overall map for the district. You can see those numbers on there. You can see some hashed marks up in the northwest near Denton. And we've got some changes. And so it's kind of hard to see probably from where you at, where you're at. But when you go on the website, you'll be able to see that. Here's the middle school. Again, this is just shows the middle school boundaries. It's the same shot of the district as well as now the high school boundaries. So there were, there are eight specific locations that we're going to talk through. There are eight proposed locations for change. And so we're going to talk through each of these a little bit faster or a little bit slower than what I've been going. So location number one on the map, this is up in the northwest. This is in Denton's area. That's the green color. The hash mark is is representing the proposed new elementary school that we're just because of elementary school was part of every long term plan. We've made the decision and we're recommending to the board that we advance that elementary school and start the planning and the process of now so that we can open it in three and a half to four years. That boundary represents the proposed boundary for the new elementary school. There are 139 students in that boundary currently. They will remain at Denton, which is why Denton will be a little bit overutilized for the next few years. But they will still go to Ridgeview Middle School and then to Redwood High School. But those 139 students will go to the new school, but they'll remain at Denton until the new school is built. There's 1,037 new housing units proposed for that area. So that's that's why we need the new school right there. So that's location number one proposal. Location number two is the red area. Let me use the thing right there. It's it's the it's the orange or red on the screen that you can see. This is currently in Riverway's boundary. There are 63 students that live there. They will come off of Riverway and they will come off, 29 will come off of Ridgeview and 20 from Golden West, all living in that small area. They will go to Shannon Ranch, Green Acres and Redwood. So that that expands Shannon Ranch's boundary down slightly into area location number two. On number three, continuing south from that area. So this is again, river, this is currently Riverway's boundary as well. 75 students in there. Ridgeview has 35, Golden West has 14. They will now go to Manuel Hernandez, Green Acres and Redwood. And we'll talk a little bit about Redwood. So we know Redwood's impacted, but we'll talk about how those numbers work and as we work through this. Number four, location number four, this is the current location where GLC is. So this is the proposed new boundary for GLC. 411 students live within that green boundary. So 411 would come off of Riverway. 165 from Ridgeview and Golden West, no change. They would go to GLC, Green Acres, and then they continue to go to Golden West. So no change to the high school, just a change in the middle school. 411 in in that proposed boundary. That's the GLC boundary. The next is location number five. This is the area north of St. John's Parkway that's behind Target. So these, this is the, this is the, this is the, the housing developments behind Target. There are currently 50 students in that area that go to Riverway and 13 that go to Ridgeview and 16 that go to Golden West. Our proposal is that those 50 students would now go to Crowley, Divisadero and Mount Whitney. I would also like to add that there's 234 new housing units being built in that area as well. And the gray area above continues to be Riverway's boundary. Location number six is in the southeast. So this is in the Annie Mitchell area. Location number six is currently in Annie Mitchell's boundary. There are 58 students in there. Divisadero, there are 13 and 20 at Mount Whitney. They will trans, they will shift over to Pinkham, Valley Oak and Golden West. And in this area, number six, there are 84 housing units being built in this area. So we've got growth on both the northwest and the southeast. Number seven is just south of that area. So there are 72 students going to Annie Mitchell and Divisadero and Mount Whitney. So they will shift to Mountain View. And they'll continue to go to Divisadero and Mount Whitney. So that's just south of that area. So changing, taking some students from Annie Mitchell and moving them over to Mountain View. And then this number eight proposal was brought to us by some staff and by community. We was brought to our attention that Royal Oak, Royal Oaks currently feeds into Green Acres and Mount Whitney, which is not exactly how the feeder should go or does go. So Royal Oaks will keep their same boundary, but we're proposing is those 64 kids will come off of Green Acres and they will now go to Divisadero and then to Mount Whitney. So that's the natural feeder for Whitney. And so that's a recommended change. There again, no change recommended to Royal Oaks boundary. I did mention that we had TK six was TK six was one of our foundations, one of our recommend recommendations. For Oak Grove, this is the phasing schedule for them, 25, 26, status quo, 26, 27, 27, 28. You can see the phasing that's planned here. Let me go into a little more detail on why we're doing it this way and why this works. This allows us to, for them to stay status quo next year and then then to have just TK six and eight the next year and then the third year, 27, 28, transition to TK six allows us the two to three years to build and design additional classrooms at Ridgeview, which will allow for the capacity of those seventh and eighth graders to go there. There are 440 new housing units projected at Oak Grove. That's about 200 students in the next three years. And you can see those listed there. And the other big thing that we're able to do with this is Oak Grove's boundary does not change. So the Oak Grove boundary remains the same. Everybody that's living within that boundary will still be able to attend Oak Grove based on this. And there are two leased currently, two leased portables at this, at the school. And that does include those portables. Global learning charter. Here's their phasing. It's it's accelerated by one year. So next year, the proposal is they go TK six and eighth grade and then 26 and 27, they go to TK six. And I did show you the the boundary for them. And again, this does allow for a robust transfer process to take place. And so we will follow our policies or policy on transfers, but that does allow space for us to be able to work through that. The Redwood verification process, this is, there's some of this and and we're still building some of this out, but our proposal will be residency verification for rising ninth graders for the 25, 26 school year as well as looking at the academies and making sure that we're enforcing the academy contracts that parents sign as well as Redwood continuing to be closed to the transfers. So again, that was a lot and fast. But again, it's it's probably probably have to sit with it a little bit and look at it. But I do want to go through some financials as well. Nathan has covered this before, but we do have four big buckets of financing, of financials available to us, developer fees, measure A, which is our general obligation bond, state facility funds reimbursements as well as the state bond passed. And so developer fees, you can see about 14 million. Measure A, general obligation bond, we just sold those bonds. I think Nathan, we have the money. We have the money. So that's 70.1 million. The state facility funds, those are reimbursements that we've already received, 42.3. And with the passage of proposition two at the state level on Tuesday for of the general election, we have currently 29.7 million that we are in line. So that will come to us in the next several months. And so we initially reported that number around 127 million. That number is now higher. It's up to 156.5 million that we currently have available for these projects. And based on everything that I talked about, this is the cost of the short term projects as project, as we're proposing, the new elementary school, about $48 million. Four additional classrooms, permanent classrooms at Ridgeview, 5 million. Removal of the portables based on all those projections and moves that I showed on those maps, a savings of 378,000. So overall, about a $53 million price tag for these short term projects. So some next steps. So the next steps is, you know, we're going to immediately make the maps available tomorrow on engage.vusd.org. We're going to provide maps to the sites. And we're going to conduct those community informational sessions. As you can see, we've got some one at Annie Mitchell on the 21st. And then GLC families on the December 3rd as long, as well as with Riverway. And then this is a first read tonight. And so following the board meeting on the 10th, providing the board approves, the steps after that would be letters to the impacted families detailing the new boundary maps, welcoming the community to those impacted sites. We'll be developing a committee for naming of GLC. We have a board policy for naming of schools. And so the GLC team is really excited about going forward with that. We'll communicate the transfer process to families because we want to get ahead of that as much as possible so that we know where everyone wants to go in terms of trans, trans, transfers potentially. And then implement the boundary changes effective with the 25, 26 school year. And so again, just something about our milestones. Here we are in November. We're doing the first read. December 10th, the second read, January would be the approval. Or December would be the approval. Then we'll have some community workshops. We'll start our long term work in February, going back out to the community with some more community workshops, some more data, some more concepts, and then April, potential long term first read and then board approval in May or June, early summer for long term concepts. So this is just for short term and that is kind of talking about what's coming up and our next steps. And so that's it. That was a lot.
That was, thank you.
Any questions you may have.
Thank you. So I do want to mention that just in addition to all of us as board members attending the community workshops, we also had a board workshop all day last Friday on this. So so we've had a chance probably to digest it and look at it upside down and backwards in all of those ways a little bit more than some that are just kind of seeing it at first glance. So before I open it up to board member and public comments, Eric, would you mind like the one thing that's kind of like, if you could just clarify, GLC on slide 33, if you go to it, it says plus 411 students. And that like is a number that I know we kind of like, ah. But when I go back to when we looked at this, you know, on Friday, on 20, slide 23, when they're proposed or projected enrollment, they're only projected at 200 more. Can you talk just a little bit and clarify that before we open it up to why it shows 401 spot, but really their projected enrollment is only supposed to go a couple hundred?
Sure. But I'm going to ask for, I'm going to phone a friend. Nathan's going to help us with this because I will definitely not get it right.
Well, that's why I turned it over to you.
I'm not afraid to admit that. So.
Yeah. So when when we looked at the, we talked a little bit about transfer process and we looked at the students coming from Riverway and the size of Riverway, once that that move happens, if it happens, Riverway goes to about 330 students. So what that allows for is the students who are at GLC, there's about 200 or so that live outside of the boundary to utilize that process to stay at GLC, but it also allows students to utilize the transfer process to remain at Riverway up to that 200 students. And so it's not all 400 would move to to GLC. There's still room at Riverway to allow some families to stay utilizing again our transfer process.
I have a couple of.
And I'm. And there's also the other thing also, there, there are students obviously at GLC that aren't in either boundary. And so that allows, you know, room for those transfer opportunities as well.
Yeah, something within page 23 of the report there, it looks like GLC bumps up to 104% utilization. And I think that's a worst case scenario number. That's if everyone stays there and doesn't transfer out.
Right, correct.
Okay, and that includes the eighth grade kids being there for that year as well.
Correct.
And that'll, that'll phase out.
Yeah, yeah. And also on the, on the page that talks about projected utilization after the, after the changes, that 39% goes up to 50 when we remove the six for Riverway, Riverway's number goes up. So it shows Riverway's utilization very low. That number is about 50, but we also know that there's about 500 kids in the queue ready to come with the new housing that's built, being built. Yep.
I I needed a couple of clarifications too. On slide 41, you mentioned continuing to enforce academy contracts. Can you explain what that means, please?
So academy contracts, when when a student, the parents sign it, when they go to, when they apply for an academy, they, the parents sign a contract. There's lots of language in there about what the content is and all that. But one of the things is, is if the student disenrolls from the academy, that they go back to their their original school. That's what that, that's, that's what that, that's specifically what that means. But it's, it's really everything on the contract. Making sure we're tight on all of those processes and and treating everybody equitably.
Right. And the other clarification on the money that's available on slide 43. It says measure A, general obligation bonds. We sold 71 point, 70.1 million. But fees are attached to that. So how much cash do we actually have?
We're actually going to get a report here in just a little bit from our, from Lori. She's, she's there with Millie. And so we will get that exact number in just a few minutes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. It's not the whole 70.1.
It's a pretty, it's a big number. It's a good number.
I had a question in regards to similar to the, what Ms. Gomoyen brought up regarding Redwood. When we say residency verification, When we say residency verification, is that the same process that we've always used? Or are we implementing a new verification process?
No, that is our, that is our process, that is our policy.
Okay, well, thank you for your report. And now is there any public comment? I will say, public comment on this item will be heard at this time. Board bylaw ninety-three, twenty-three provides three minutes for individual speakers and a maximum of twenty minutes per topic. I do have some green forms here.
President Gaby, I have one thing I wanted to mention before we go to public comment. I did want to flag slides fifteen and sixteen when we look at the overall socioeconomic diversity of our schools and school sites and the socioeconomic variance. Looking across these sites, I was curious, so I did some research after our board workshop session. According to the California State School Dashboard, Visalia Unified School District has sixty-seven point six percent of our students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. And, and I want to be clear, I, I do appreciate all the work that our facilities team, Mr. Penya and everyone has done to address these short-term fixes to over relief, or to relieve overcrowding at several of our sites. But when I look at some of these disparities between sites at, in terms of, are they reflective of that sixty-seven point six percent? If we look at our middle school sites, most sites are close to that. Divisadero fifty-nine point five percent on the, under the proposed plan, Green Acres forty-eight point one, La Jolla forty-eight point four, Valley Oak fifty-eight point six, but Ridgeview at thirty-seven point four percent, significantly lower. Similarly, when we look at our high school division sites, El Diamante under the proposed plan has forty-five point two percent, Golden West fifty-three point three percent, Mount Whitney fifty-six point nine percent, and Redwood at thirty-two point six percent. And so even though we are not increasing the, the variance under the current plans, I think this is something that we should potentially look at when we come back in February at our long-term planning. Can we be more intentional about ensuring that all of our school district sites are more reflective of the community and the student body at whole and at sixty-seven point six percent? So again, while I am supportive of making any needed changes that we need to make in the immediate to relieve that overcrowding, I do think we can be more intentional about ensuring that our sites are more reflective of the community that we serve. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the comment.
And I will open it back up to board comments. I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in there quick, but public comment to Sarah Egman?
Hello. Um, so my name is Sarah Egman, and I, um, so I have this written out. I, I hope what I heard earlier, though, answers my question. I'm a mother of four, all four of my kids have gone to GLC. My oldest daughter is nineteen, she was actually the first group of kids that started GLC. She followed Ms. Ari over from Royal Oaks, loved it. So since then, all my kids have gone there. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, um, they just love that school. And long story short, we're not in the boundary. I don't want to move. My kids, um, just love the school. So this is why I'm here tonight to advocate for my eight-year-old twins to please have the opportunity to stay at GLC. They are in third grade now and have gone to Global since kindergarten. Actually, before that, they went to the Head Start preschool next door. My oldest, uh, she's nineteen years old, was part of the first class of GLC. She followed Ms. Ari, like I said, um, my family's fallen in love with that school. My thirteen-year-old attended GLC her entire primary school years. She is now, by the way, a four-point-O student at Ridgeview, doing great. My nineteen-year-old is at COS, doing great, four-point-O as well. That school has amazing teachers and staffs. We've had some deaths in our family and significant issues that they've dealt with on a personal level. I don't wish to rehash or have my children rehash. They know a lot of our ins and outs. I am actually an educator myself, I did my student teaching at that school. Just the other day, Mrs. Nguyen recognized my eighteen-year-old out and about at her, one of her first jobs. We go to church with a lot of the teachers that work there. I just, I think that it's awesome that GLC wants to fill the need for overpopulated schools. That just goes, it's in a testament right there how amazing that school is and their entire staff. However, however, I do feel like priority transfers should go to students who already attend that school. Like I said, I'm an educator myself, and I know how important understanding student needs is to creating effective and engaging learning environments. And it would not do only my children, but all children who have cultivated their educational, emotional, and social roots at GLC. It would do them a disservice to rip those healthy roots out and possibly stunt their educational potential. And if transportation is an issue, because when I saw your proposal, we are barely outside of the boundary. Obviously, it's been a charter school, so I've never had transportation. I'm happy to continue to drop them off and pick them up. That's, that's not a problem. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you, and yes, utilize our transfer process.
Okay, I'd love to stay there, thank you.
Uh, Cheryl Wood.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Wood. I came to the special board meeting on Friday, and I just wanted to say I'm disappointed with the removal of the middle school from Oak Grove. I've been an Oak Grove mom for nine and a half years. When my oldest Joel, who's now a sophomore, was in sixth grade, there was little hesitation to our joint decision that he would stay from middle school. The chance for him to stay in our safe little community and being pushed to excel and supported by a whole school staff who knew him so well during such an awkward phase of life just made sense. Seventh grade was amazing, I love seeing how close-knit the boys got. But it was eighth grade that was a game changer for Joel. Mrs. Heatherly's passion for math pushed Joel and, and me in learning. And while he wasn't on the Math Super Bowl team, I know Mr. Fatika and Mrs. Heatherly are always successful in the competition, showing that our math program is doing really well. The amount and the difficulty of homework Mr. Ojeda assigned in eighth grade sometimes brought Joel to tears. But coming into high school, he felt totally prepared. Mr. Ojeda also instilled a love for filmmaking in Joel. The creative exploratories he offered gave Joel a new outlet for exploring this interest. And so when it came time to register for high school, we were on the fence of sending him to a private school. He's really small, and I was sure he wasn't, he wouldn't survive at a public school. But the Media Arts Academy at LD caught his attention, and even though I wasn't sure about it, he decided he wanted to go there. So he came into LD last fall knowing only one person, and yet he's made a ton of friends. He's joined clubs, he's joined the tennis team, even though he'd never played before in his life. He's got a four-point-O, even coming in with honors English, math, two honors last year. He even received the minor pick award last year during the first semester, which only given out to, I think, sixteen students a year. And his success is mostly due to our Oak Grove experience. Not only does Oak Grove Middle School prepare our kids well for high school, but it makes them into more caring and respectful people. We have our buddy program where the upper grades pair up with the younger grades, and the younger kids just look forward to their buddy days, and they look up to those older kids. Having middle school also provides our fifth and sixth graders with a chance to join our advanced band and orchestra. And they're gaining additional experience, which helps them excel in the high school music programs. I also love that our sports are no-cut. It allows kids to try out for sports and be a part of a team, whereas at Ridgeview, they won't necessarily have that chance. I have a fourth grader, Zach, who was born the year that Joel started kindergarten at Oak Grove, and he spent his whole life at the school. And he has been dreaming that he will stay at the middle school like his brother and his sister. So I truly hope you'll consider letting Oak Grove stay K-8. Our community loves the program. I think it's so important for our kids to have the option to stay for middle school, to grow in self-confidence and maturity in a protected environment where they're known and loved. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Florrick?
Hi, my name's Angel Florrick, and I'm the parent of seven children, five of who currently attend Oak Grove Elementary School. Tonight, I like to address the school board specifically about being a parent of children on the autism spectrum. So far, I've had five of my seven children attend Oak Grove K-38 campus. Of these five children, four of them are either diagnosed with autism, ADHD, or ADD. I myself am autistic, although I mask very well, and studied communication, that's why I talked to you guys tonight. The issue or aspect that I'd like to address is one that is that of continually, continually, continuity and stability for our students, especially for children with any special needs. As we heard earlier, I believe she left, as we heard earlier from a very concerned mother, all campuses do not seem to be created equal in regards to the services and supports and aids offered to our students on the autism spectrum. This is severely disappointing, especially for those surrounding peers who are negatively impacted by this lack of support structure. However, my third-grade son, who currently is at Oak Grove, is on the autism spectrum, and he has thrived with, at Oak Grove's, and there specifically in the K-38 program, I believe, because of the support system, exceptional teachers and caring aides that provide a consistent supportive structure. For anybody here who may have children on the spectrum, a consistent supportive structure in school environment is crucial, and large life transitions can be very difficult and emotional, and especially for them emotionally and academically. This is why I've been so grateful for the K-38 program at Oak Grove. My children have been able to learn and to grow in a consistent academic environment until they have aged to a point of greater emotional maturity, and they have been able to remain on a campus where they have eight years' worth of faculty who are invested in their well-being and educational success. My oldest child, who is autistic, who is now a sophomore at Redwood, would not have fared well at all having, had he not been given the opportunity to remain at our K-38 school. He struggles tremendously with social situations and relationships, but had he been forced to transition to a middle school setting, when he reached seventh grade, he would not have been ready for that transition. And I'm happy to share that because of our K-38 program and amazing support staff and amazing and loving teachers that we have there, and their amazing, amazing aides who put in so much time for children on the spectrum, I am happy to share that he's very successful doing well as a four-point-O student at Redwood High School. And I attribute a large portion of that to the success of our K-38 program and the amazing staff that we have. I think many of us in this room know that middle school is a rough place and a hard transition for most kids, especially those who are very socially successful. But for all of our kids who are on the autism, autism spectrum, transitions are difficult, and they are emotionally and physically exhausting for them, as well as the families and the staff that support them. So I really hope that you guys would consider keeping the K-38 program in some way, shape, or form. I have a large hope that there is some kind of agreement or some kind of other alternate transition that might allow for this so that kids like my children will be able to have successful transition into high school and become successful adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara, I'm not going to butcher your last name.
My name's Tamara Olet. My children attend the Global Learning Charter School. Sorry, I have a hard time talking. When I heard about the news, I became very upset. I also have a child with ASD, ADHD, other health impairments, and speech and language. To rip him from his school because we are not even near Global Learning Charter, and I am perfectly fine driving my child back and forth will affect him in all different sorts of ways. I had his IEP today, it started at two forty-five, we finished up at five o'clock today, and we still didn't finish. Special education is a concern with Visalia Unified. But when a child has a school and the people that love him and a safe place for him to go is something very important. It's not only that, Global Learning is a family. They are great people, the staff. Everybody there is absolutely amazing. When you see the vice principal doing a little girl's hair because maybe she didn't have time that day just to make her hair look untangled, that is something that a teacher shouldn't have to do. But they do it because they love the students. They put in every effort to all of their children. And I really hope that the children that do go there are grandfathered in to at least not even have to do a transfer, but have that choice, because that's what a charter school is. It's a choice. And us as the parents know what our children's needs are. And not everybody on the other side listens to what the child's needs are. So there is a commitment with Visalia Unified School District for the students and the families. So I think it's the best interest that everybody listens to those families because there are students that have different needs. It does matter what school your child goes to, and it does matter what teacher your child has, because that teacher is the one that's going to build that relationship and be with that child and teach them and learn them. There are some teachers that don't know how to do that with specific children, but there are teachers that do know that. And when they're in a community like Global Learning Charter, everybody on that campus can learn how that child, what those child's needs are and how they learn, because every child is different, and we don't all learn the same. And Global Learning has showed my family that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, please, just use the transfer process, and definitely. I have two others that I'm not sure if they're this item, Maritza, or do you want to be on the next item, or Betty, or Betty Bautista? I'll call you again on the next item if not. Okay. With that, any additional board member comments or questions? The transfer process that begins December second, right?
I don't know those dates off the top of my head, but we will communicate that to the families clearly, yes, by our current process.
And I was scanning through, but I do know there's also, you already have a date on there to which you'll be out at Riverway and those schools to talk more. All right, this is not an action item, this is a first reading. And with that, I'll move to resolution to approve voluntary closure of Global Learning Charter School, public hearing and first reading. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item and first bring up Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gaby, members of the board and Superintendent Shrum. So as you just heard, as part of our short-term recommendation, you know, one of the actions within that recommendation is to utilize Global Learning Charter School to provide a boundary. And so the action or the, the item tonight is not an action item, but it's bringing forward for first reading and public hearing the resolution to voluntary close the Global Learning Charter School, which would actionize the recommendation. And as Mr. Kara mentioned, there have been several months of public outreach, as well as meetings at the school site with the, the parents and families, with the staff at that school site. And that's the reason for this recommendation being brought forward. This resolution is the formal action that will allow the district to create the school boundary and then, of course, go through a school naming process and, and the actions that we would need to take with the California Department of Education. Again, not a, a action for this evening, but just a first reading.
There we go. Is there any public comment? Oh, yes, Maritza Argon. No. Betty Bautista?
Hello, I'm Betty Bautista, and if I wouldn't know, I wasn't going to be here, I was going to say no. But like my friend Kamara said, I'm Kamara from GLC, we are not just a community. We are a family where we can, where we all know each other, whereas we need something, we don't go, it's like a neighborhood, we're far away from each other. Some of them live by Lowe's, some of them live by Kmart, I just randomly things. But you know what, we're more than a community, we are a family. So the staff and everything, it's greatly, I had to work myself there, but I'm not getting into details. And I keep hearing that it's a short term, but what about the programs inside GLC? What about the learning, learning center? What about the Spanish? What about the science? You guys keep saying short term, but what about those students that keep, they do help them out? And I see achievements, and I see those smiles when they get those achievements. What about, you guys are saying short terms, but have you guys thought about the kids? How is that going to affect them? And keeping to that question, he made, I don't know if I answered, I'm not sure, I'm so nervous. If the answer was questioned, but the boundaries, when we went, started going to the meetings, one of the questions was that, what about if we don't live in those boundaries? Will we be able to stay? And the answer was that we received that they was, yes, you guys are more welcome to stay because we are, don't want to kick the GLC students out, we want to actually keep them, and we will bring in more students. But now, what, we're getting kicked out, out of the boundaries, and then we got to do the whole process of transferring and stuff like that? That's just, I don't understand now anymore, and I'm so nervous, so I'm going to sit down.
You did great, and please just work with their site, because we'll definitely, you know, they'll clarify that for you. Yeah, you did great. And please, um, just work with their site because we'll definitely, um, you know, they'll clarify that for you. Uh Candy Medina.
Hello, I'm Candy Medina. I want to thank you for your time and thank you to GLC. I think I inappropriately, I should have spoke earlier, but I would like to take the time to speak now. We chose GLC several years ago. It is where my daughter is now in seventh grade. She has experienced growth both socially and academically, attending all sports and after school groups available. When my daughter completed sixth grade, we chose to keep her at GLC and that was her choice as well. GLC is not our our neighborhood school. We drive approximately twenty minutes, twenty minutes to and from. I would like to request consideration in allowing the seventh graders to complete next year as eighth graders at GLC. Thank you for your time and again, thank you to GLC for your time and dedication to the growth of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is on the proposed changes that they would stay as eighth grade. So um, just to answer that question. Any more public comment? Not on a green form. It's all the green forms they have. Okay. Um, okay, I will now close the public hearing um and reconvene for board comments. Um, I do want to start this just first to acknowledge the fabulous work GLC has done um in becoming their our first Visalia Unified Charter and um, I was trying to, I think it was two thousand sixteen, um, they started. Um, and I got to see firsthand that process of opening a charter and Dr. Alrey leading that with the teachers there and the parents and community members. And it was truly one of the most authentic, like just um even innovative processes. Um, everybody came together with ideas and honestly, I left each meeting going, I have no idea how they're gonna come together with that. And it did. Um, and everybody's voices were heard and they truly um thought about what do students need and what's best for students. Um, they threw out just innovative ideas, um, teachers like took risks of being learners. They talked about things like looping, which if you know education, nobody wants a combination class like for anything. They'll do anything to not have a combination class, but they said, you know, what would that be if we stayed with our kids for a couple of years and um, through every discussion, it was always not about adults. It was always about kids and I think they've always remained true to that. Um, my kids went there when they were young and it was one of the best decisions ever. Um, they had amazing teachers. And um, I think it was even evident tonight um from them being on the the list there with some of the biggest growth. Um, it's just um a dedicated staff. When new staff come in, they take them under their wings and um they coach them up. And so just really um kind of just wanna um say that I've been privileged to um, you know, kind of be part of part of that process and thank you to that GLC staff because um, you know, they've they've really took some steps um to be innovative and try new things and put kids first. And that's, that's just amazing. So um, with that, any other board comment? Go ahead, Dr. D.
Yeah, so I was also around at the inception of the school. I was superintendent then and we took the opportunity with the opening of a new school just to the north to look at the, and I'll use the F word here, Fairview, to look at Fairview and see what could be done to provide a vital resource for a neighborhood that was feeling like it was overlooked. And the result was a process that Ms. Gaby just described and the result was the school and the school has always been an opportunity for Visalia Unified to be daring. We use the word daring a lot then because back then daring was a scary word. Um, and it became that. And I think that what we're looking at now is a growth and evolution of the school from the original concept into a different concept that serves kids better, understanding that that the the personality of the school is very much set and this is kind of a threat to that, but the school remains innovative and a and a great place for kids to go and a great place for teachers to be. Uh, the school had one or two of the very best teachers in Visalia Unified and that when the process came together, where teachers and an innovative principal and some very highly committed parents came together and said, we want something different and they challenged themselves to create it, it worked. So I think now we have the opportunity to extend that, to affirm it, even though it's under a different boundary setup. And I'd like to think that those folks that want to be there can stay there and and we'll we'll affirm that and move on with whatever, with the next evolution of GLCS and its new name uh brings. But I I want to make sure that folks understand that this is a successful school. It's a school that we need to reshape a little bit to deal with with size and resource management at a time when other districts and other communities are downsizing, we're upsizing actually. And to affirm again that the school has a place and it's doing good work as we saw tonight in the report on performance. We want to to make sure that that continues. So it's been a good thing. We want to maintain a good thing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Gaby. Um, I know I gave kudos and a shout out to GLC earlier during my board report, but uh kudos uh and echoing my colleagues on the board, um, just the amazing work. I was not around at the inception of GLC. And in fact, when somebody told me like Fairview Elementary, I was like, I I don't know, I've never heard of that before, right? Um, and I want to specifically highlight a lot of the work that's been going on um under the leadership of GLC outside of just a regular school day. Uh, GLC along with Houston Elementary are two of our schools within Visalia Unified School District um that are working towards Community Schools Grant and this wonderful opportunity to invest a lot and a significant amount of money into our schools. And so there have been leaders uh from the community, teachers, staff members, administrators who have been meeting um for, I believe, the past years. I was a part of these meetings at the beginning. Unfortunately, this semester, my school schedule hasn't lined up. Um, and so just recognizing that there's gonna be, there's gonna be even greater opportunity to reimagine resources invested into this site. And I also wanted to ask a clarification question because uh just to be sure that our potential renaming and boundaries at this specific site is not going to affect any of that potential community schools grant that um they are set to receive and and invest in. Is that correct?
We still have some, we still have some work to do on that, on that question. Yeah.
Okay. Um, but again, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to uh reimagine and I'm very, very, very proud of the leadership, our staff, our teachers, all at GLC um and the future of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and again, this is not an action item. This is a first read. So I'll go on to post bond sales review. Uh, Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez and Millie.
Yes, good evening again. Uh, so I'm going to introduce Lori Ranieri and Keith Weaver again. Um, yeah, but this is a this is a an informational item related to our Measure E uh bond refinance and the Measure A bond issuance. And this is a a results of the sale and I want to give a shout out to support member Gamoyen and to some of our staff who attended uh a little watch party afterwards and and talk through some of the, some of the results of the sale. But I'm gonna turn it over first to uh Keith Weaver with uh GFS JPA and we're gonna go through the results.
Well, first you're turning it over to me. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Lori Ranieri, CEO of Government Financial Services Joint Powers Authority. And I want to start by thanking you for your membership. The district has committed to finance best practices, ethics and transparency in being a member of the JPA. And we love having you and you're just a wonderful example for for all of our members, all of our fifty seven members. Working with the district is always an experience of diligent teamwork. It it's really amazing how everyone comes together. Everybody asks good questions. Everybody does their part. From the board down to Hannah, who provided my dog with her name on a water bottle and a personalized water bowl under my seat today. So I want to say we always get a warm welcome here. And apparently Millie gets introduced before Mr. Weaver, who is our Director of Services, but um he doesn't seem to take that personally. We absolutely love the superintendent's good news report and I'm sure all of you love it too. Um, we actually have never seen a superintendent do something quite like that. And now we've seen it several times. We love it. And so we want to add some good news. But it is late. And in the interests of alacrity, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Weaver, who will not leave the the presentation for an anecdote, a joke or a Dilbert cartoon. He'll get right to business and take us to the end. So Keith.
Thank you. Good evening. And I will try to blast us through this, but I will warn you, it's quite a bit of good news to share, but I will do my best to uh to be brief here. So um, starting with Measure E. Measure E, you'll recall, this was our prior bond measure from two thousand twelve and we refinanced some of our bonds to take advantage of uh good market, good market conditions. And so I'll start by talking about process. Um, we really try to set set up the process to achieve the best results. And to do that, we incorporate as many best practices as we can as published by the Government Finance Officers Association. I've listed several here, but it's around encouraging competition, managing costs, really trying to get the best deal for taxpayers that we can. And we went through a credit rating process. The district has an excellent credit rating. Uh, the table on the right shows the list of ratings and Visalia Unified School District is near the top of the list uh with a double A two credit rating, which is really excellent among school districts around the state and also locally. And one of the big reasons is our strong financial positions uh with solid reserves and liquidity. So that's a real um, commendment to both the business practice and the board to really steer the good financial operations of the school district. Uh, in terms of process, so we had a a competitive process. This is on October twenty fourth, eight thirty five in the morning from Measure E, Measure A I'll talk about later was a little bit later. And we tried to encourage competition. We invite as many banks and underwriters to bid on this as we can. Um, we provide flexible parameters and really the goal was more competition means better results for the district. So in terms of the results, uh, we ended up having ten firms bid from across the United States on our bonds, which is really outstanding. You can see there from across the US, we had one here on the West Coast, uh several in the Midwest and a lot on the East Coast as well. And ten firms I'm highlighting for you, this is the number of bids going back to two thousand and ten. And ten bits has been more than the district has ever received in recent history. So really nice uh show of competition here amongst banks and writers to bid on our our bonds. I'm also sharing with you, we've uh had experience with four hundred and twenty three competitive sales for school districts around the state of California since two thousand and three. And this bid result was in the top eight percent. So sort of a really sort of elite group of strong competition that was generated here. Um, we think that was due in part is that the timing worked out for us very well. This was sort of a relatively light calendar of bonds coming to market. Uh, but also we think the really strong credit quality of the district attracted a lot of interest and in our bonds. And then this is showing the uh the bid results. So the winning bid was from a firm called Mezaro Financial. It's uh sort of a lesser known firm, but it beat out a lot of really uh some of the really big banks across the United States. And they proposed an interest rate of about two and a half percent, uh which is fantastic. And I'll point out that the difference between the first and last place bid was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in savings for our our taxpayers. Um, in addition to a lower interest rate, we also um shortened the term of the bonds to sort of maximize our savings and get the lowest interest rate possible. Um, so that was a nice feature of this refinancing. It allows us to pay off the debt faster. Um, we are also able to save on costs. The really nice bidding environment as well as the cost management meant uh we, the district saved about um two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars in costs as compared to budget, which we shared with you a couple of months ago. So a really nice reduction in the expense is associated with this. And then last thing is on the um the repayment side. So these bonds repaid by our property taxpayers and the savings from refinancing ended up resulting in about five and a half million dollars in total taxpayer savings across the school district. So we think that's a really outstanding result. And then as a best practice, we do look at a benchmark called net present value savings. And with that far exceeded both the best practice recommended minimum as well as what we had estimated and was just a really nice signal that this was a a great refinancing result. And then in terms of taxpayer uh tax levies, so the tax levies uh going forward are estimated to be right around the uh the amount that was communicated to voters for Measure E, which was thirty dollars per hundred thousand assessed value. So we're gonna be right, we expect to be right around that amount. And the taxes will only um last for about four years and then it trails off. And the hope is that thereafter, we can shorten that up even more, but we're able to help reduce that tax levy in the outer years and also reduce the number of years in which taxes are collected. So it's gonna be a really nice uh savings for for our taxpayers. So just looking over Measure E, this was the second refinancing we did. The first one um saved about six million dollars. This one saved about eleven, five and a half million. So in total, the good fiscal stewardship across the uh the years has helped save our taxpayers about eleven and a half million dollars compared to the estimate at the time of the Measure E election. So just to kind of wrap up here um with a conclusion, uh, we had lower debt service. Uh, Measure E has resulted in sixty two, sixty two million dollars in lower debt service payments compared to the time of election. We've had lower tax rates for fewer years. The average has been fourteen dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value less with three fewer years of taxation. And the hope is we'll be able to shorten that up even more. And then more money for for facilities projects. Uh, Measure E was designed to help provide money for facilities. And the district ended up receiving three point four million dollars more for Measure E than originally anticipated. So it's across the board, just really outstanding results from our Measure E. So I will quickly um transition to Measure A and then be happy to open up for questions. So Measure A was our most recent bond from two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we're currently in the middle of it. And this is the bond that we're currently working on that was mentioned earlier to help generate some money for our facilities program. And so we had a very similar process as Measure E incorporating best practices. We had the same credit rating, the same process. The only difference was that this was held about a half hour later on the same day. And so in terms of these results, again, we had ten bids from across the United States. We had some many of the same bidders, but also some new entrants um onto this bid process that were different from for Measure E. So again, really great competition here. Um, the bid results, the winning bidder was a different firm. This one was called TD Securities. And the bit, the winning interest rate here was about three percent. And the difference in savings between the first and last was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, interest rates, you know, were below the level planned. You can see this is a chart showing a graph of a a benchmark interest rate going back to uh Measure A and the interest rates at the time um were hovering just below four percent. We had budgeted for interest rates to go up. They did go up for a time, but then they went down and then it went back up again. And at the end of the day, they were pretty close to where they were at the time of the Measure A election, uh but we had budgeted for them to go up. So that gives them an opportunity to save some money. And in so doing, um, we ended up issuing um the the full amount of bonds as planned, but we were able to reduce costs by about seven hundred and forty thousand, much of that due to the good bidding environment that we received. And we ended up getting more um facilities money than estimated, which is great. So we ended up uh compared to the pre-election projection, we ended up getting about four point seven million dollars more for our facilities program than had been estimated at the time of of Measure A. So the original estimate was about a hundred million and we ended up with about a hundred and four point seven million. On the taxpayer side, again, these bonds are repaid by property taxes. And uh the good result means that our taxpayers uh will end up saving about ninety six million dollars compared to what was estimated at the time of the Measure A election. And then another result here, this is outstanding, which is lower taxes in fewer years. You can see the taxes so far have been well below the communication uh to voters. And we're expected that that will continue going forward. And in addition, that taxes will end about seven years sooner than originally estimated. So just to wrap up here on Measure A, uh ninety six million dollars less in bond debt service payments. Uh, lower taxes of about eleven dollars for hundred thousand dollars of sets value less, seven fewer years of taxation. And then in total, more money for projects of about four point seven million than estimated. And then just to kind of bring it all together here, um across both Measures E and Measure A, you can see that the bond measure amounts combined was a hundred and sixty five point four million. In total, the district will receive eight point two million dollars more in the facilities program than originally estimated. Uh, savings for our taxpayers is a hundred and fifty seven point eight million. And I will point out that's almost as much as the bonds themselves. So it's a really, really high number and a really fantastic result. Uh, reduction in tax levies were both occurred in both Measure E and Measure A and shorter year, number of years in terms of how uh often taxpayers will be taxed. So just again, across the board. In terms of how uh, often taxpayers will be taxed. So just again, across the board. Outstanding results around both Measure E and Measure A and a big success for the, for the school district. So thank you and happy to uh, receive any questions.
And despite the late hour, all of that in less than fifteen minutes.
As promised.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comment?
Um, I was just gonna say thank you and honestly Lori, you should be a teacher. You were so good at that bond when we went to the little. Well, by the time I got on, the bonds were sold. And so you really explained it well and, but I did miss my croissant and coffee. Had to make my own, but that's okay.
That's the world of Zoom, but um, we can make time to get together for coffee and croissants soon at Visalia one day.
Only if Millie goes. And did you buy a new outfit? Not, not for Zoom. Uh, all right, well, thank you for your port. Thank you on behalf of like our district and our taxpayers. Um, we just said, I hope a press release definitely going out with that or like some skywriting or something like that. And thank you to Nathan for our double A two credit rating. I think you should put that on his like business cards or something, so. Thank you. That is not an action item. It was for information only. Thank you. All right, notice of intent to employ certified management personnel and approval of administrative services credential waiver request. Assistant Superintendent of HRD Ben Dillon.
All right, thank you, Board President Gaby, Superintendent Shrum, members of the board. Um, I am here uh, for a reason not unlike other evenings where I am requesting for you to approve. Uh, this waiver for our administrative credential position. Uh, this is a unique position where we have an individual who has continued to pursue those requirements. And requesting that the board allow us to move forward in doing so.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the notice of intent to employ certified management personnel and approval administrative services credential waiver request?
Our motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Case Pierce Leto and a second by Board Member Viegas.
Student board rep votes yes, motion passes seven oh.
All right, notice of intent to employ certified personnel and approval of provisional internship permit request. Ben Dillon.
Thank you. Again, asking for the uh, board to approve this provisional internship perm- permit. Uh, this is for an individual who's not yet met subject matter competence, uh, but will work towards uh, pursuing that and ultimately in their, their multiple. Uh, subject uh, in this, for this specific uh, employee.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the notice of intent to employ certified personnel and approval of PIP request?
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Clerk Naylor and a second by Board Member Case Pierce Leto.
Student board rep votes yes, motion passes seven oh.
All right, board policy revisions, adoptions, deletions, our first read, Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, President Gaby, board members. This is just a first read of our board policies that were presented in the recent Board Policy Committee. Uh, and again, this is just the first read. Those policies uh, and their modifications are available uh, in your board packets.
Okay, any board member questions, comments? This is a first read and not an action item. Warrant list, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four to October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list for dates? Above the September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four to October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got your nail on there. On a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Case Pierce Leto.
Student board rep votes yes, motion passes six with one abstention.
The meeting is now adjourned.